Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. The appointed hour having arrived and a quorum being present, I'll now call the special town meeting to order. I'll ask the town clerk to come forward to read the warning and the return.
Warrant for the special town meeting. Town of Freetown, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Monday, October 23rd, 2023, 7:00 p.m. Upon Aquit Regional High School, Robert C. Falcon Auditorium, 100 Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, in the county of Bristol. To either of the constables of the Town of Freetown. Greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Freetown, who are qualified to vote in the elections and town affairs, to meet at Upon Aquit Regional High School, Robert C. Falcon Auditorium, 100 Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, on Monday, the 23rd day of October, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. Then and there to act on the following articles. This. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the following places: the Asonet Post Office, the East Freetown Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store in Asonet, the Freetown Town Hall, Freetown Communications Center, and Freetown Fire Rescue Station Number Three. Hear of, fail not, and make return of the original warrant with your doings thereon immediately after making service thereof to the town clerk of the Town of Freetown, Massachusetts. Given under our hands and seal of the Town of Freetown this fifth day of October, anno. domini, 2023. Signed, the Town of Freetown Board of Selectmen. Trevor R. Matthews, Jared C. Zager, Carlos A. Lopes. October 6th, 2023. To the town clerk, Town of Freetown, Massachusetts, I have this day posted attested copies of the warrant in the designated places described herein: in Asonet, the Asonet Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store, and the Freetown Town Hall. In East Freetown, the East Freetown Post Office, Fire Station Number Three, and the Freetown Communications Center. Signed, Lieutenant Benjamin Leveque, Freetown Constables Designee.
Okay. Please, if at any point in time you can't hear somebody that's talking tonight, like I said, they're new microphones, so don't be shy about letting us know. A couple of things to let you know before we begin. If you have a cellphone, please silence it. If you do wish to speak, there are microphones at the bottom of each of the aisles. Just make sure that you hold on to be recognized before you start. The first time that you come up, you want to have your vote ticket with you so that we can see you're a registered voter. You need to identify yourself by name and at least which side of town you live on, Asonet or East Freetown. You don't have to give your address. And a just statistical item I have to say before we begin. If they are passed tonight, Articles 1, 2, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 25, 26, 27, 29, and 30 will be funded from what's called free cash. Articles 15, 16, 17, 23, 24, and 28 will be funded through taxation. And with that, we will begin. Article 1, to see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5b, to create a new stabilization, a new special purpose stabilization fund, to be known as the opioid settlement stabilization fund, which may be expended for all of the purposes allowed by law, including those outlined in applicable opioid litigation settlement documents, a document prepared by the Substance Addiction Bureau of the Commonwealth's Office of Health and Human Services Department, found at www.mass.gov/doc/massachusetts-abatement-terms/download, entitled "Abatement Strategies", and consistent with any state guidelines or regulations further clarifying allowable uses of opioid litigation settlement funds, and further to adopt the last paragraph of said Section 5b and dedicate to such fund without further appropriation 100% of the opioid litigation settlement funds received by the town, and further to transfer from available funds a sum of money received by the town from opioid litigation settlements resulting from the town's participation in the national opioid multi-district litigation into said opioid settlement stabilization fund, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a two-thirds vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Sure.
Y'all hear me? So first, Kevin Demaris, Board of Health Agent, Town of Freetown. I live in Asonet, and I am a registered voter.
Oh, yeah.
Is that everything?
Mm-hmm.
So before I get started, the Board of Health would like to thank the Board of Selectmen and Town Administration for working hard on this to help us fight the opioid epidemic.
I will, okay. I apologize. Is this on now? Thank you. Okay. I would like to start by saying the Board of Health would like to thank the Board of Selectmen and Town Administration for helping us work on this project, this opioid epidemic that affects us all. The first article tonight, what it does is exactly what it says it does. It sets up a fund. So every year when we get the settlement funds from the Attorney Generals, that can be put into that account specifically so that we then can use it to help fight the opioid epidemic. I will speak briefly to Article Number Two. That simply iterates the dollar amount that we are going to be putting into that account so that the Board of Health may spend that amount of money. That is $15,000 that we're asking to be put into that account. In total, the town will be receiving approximately $75,000 over the next several years. I believe that it expires in '35, 2035. '38, my wife is telling me, '38. So we'll get approximately $3,000, $4,000 a year, which we can use for myriad items to help combat the opioid crisis. So with that being said, Mr. Moderator, I would make a motion to adopt as read with the amount of $438.43 to be placed into that stabilization fund. Although I'm getting looks of concern.
Forty-three cents.
Did I not say that? It's three hu... I apologize then. $348.43 to be put into that stabilization. The remaining $15,000 we granted back to the Board of Health in Article Number Two for us to expend in the next fiscal year. As we get these funds, the town will be required to then place those into the stabilization fund, and then the Board of Health will then ask at town meeting so that we can expend those funds in the future.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt Article 1 and to transfer the sum of $348.43 to establish this stabilization fund. Is there any discussion on Article 1? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article 1 is adopted unanimously. Excuse me. And you have to apologize. We're having problems with the lights as well, so I can't always see what I'm actually reading. It's true. If I happen to say that we live in Lakeville or something like that, you'll have to forgive me. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be expended in coordination with the Board of Health in accordance with the Massachusetts State Subdivision for statewide opioid settlement funds, funds to be used for all of the purposes allowed by law, including those outlined in applicable opioid litigation settlement documents, a document prepared by the Substance Addiction Bureau of the Commonwealth's Office of Health and Human Services Department, found at www.mass.gov/doc/massachusetts-abatement-terms/download, entitled "Abatement Strategies", and consistent with any state guidelines or regulations further clarifying allowable uses of opioid litigation settlement funds, to supplement and strengthen resources available to communities and families for substance abuse, substance use disorder prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote, and the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article 2 as read. Is there any discussion on Article 2? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 2 is adopted unanimously. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease from time to time all or a portion of the roof and a portion of the parking lot of the police station located at 15 Memorial Drive, East Freetown, Mass. 02717, for such terms of years and on such terms and conditions as are acceptable to the Board of Selectmen, to solar energy providers for the purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a solar facility on the property, and to enter into a power purchase agreement with the solar energy providers, and further to authorize the select board to grant easements on said property to Eversource, other utility companies and/or providers to install, maintain, operate, repair, reinstall, or replace any utilities required for interconnection to the solar facility project, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article 3 as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 3 is adopted unanimously. Article 4, to see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease from time to time all or a portion of the roof of the Freetown Elementary School located at 43 Bullock Road, Freetown, Mass. 02717, for terms of years and on such terms and conditions as are acceptable to the Board of Selectmen, to solar energy providers for the purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a solar facility on the property, and further to authorize the select board to grant easements on said property to Eversource, other utility company and/or the providers to install, maintain, operate, repair, reinstall, or replace any utilities required for interconnection to the solar facility project, and/or take any other action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article 4 as read. Is there any discussion on Article 4? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 4 is adopted unanimously. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to accept Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 8j, establishing a commission on disability whose members shall be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. We had a second followed by a motion. It still works. Is there any discussion on Article 5? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 5 is adopted unanimously. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Assessors to enter into an agreement for payments in lieu of taxes pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 45, as amended by Section 61 of Chapter 8 of the Acts of 2021, on such terms and conditions, and for a term of years as the Board of Assessors deems in the best interest of the town for taxes attributable to a solar facility owned and operated by: number one, Navasun LLC or its affiliates, successors, or assigns on land located at the Austin Bog and adjacent land off Dr. Brayley Road, Assessors Map 243, Lot 24. Number two, DHMA Solar Owner One LLC or its affiliates, successors, or assigns on land located at 1 Nick Drive, East Freetown, Mass., Assessors Map 241, Lot 26.11. And further to authorize the Board of Assessors to take any such action as may be necessary or convenient to carry out the vote taken hereunder and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Assessors. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article 6 as read. Is there any discussion on Article 6? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 6 is adopted unanimously. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Freetown Protective Bylaws, Article 11, zoning bylaws, to insert therein Section 11.34 Stormwater Management, the text of which is on file in the office of the town clerk and the planning board. It's also attached to the back of your warrant if you want to browse it. Further, to amend the Town of Freetown Protective Bylaws, Article 11, zoning bylaws, outlined to include this section, and further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw may be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the planning board. It requires a two-thirds vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. We will now hear a recommendation from the planning board, favorable or unfavorable. Somebody can second if they want.
Second.
Okay. No, no, you still have to tell them whether the planning board recommends it. We have a motion to adopt and a second, and now we're going to hear if the planning board actually likes it.
The planning board does recommend this article.
Very good. Thank you. Victoria is our planning and land use administrator, speaking on behalf of the planning board to let us know that they like the thing they submitted. It's a weird technicality, but the law requires it. Is there any discussion on Article 7? Yes, sir. You just come up to one of the microphones, introduce yourself, and ask whatever questions you may have. Oh, hold on one second. That microphone's coming through a little quiet. Give it a try now, please. Nope, still nothing. All right.
Thank you.
We'll find one that works.
Hi, I own property on both sides of the town, one in East Freetown, one in Asonet.
Oh, they couldn't hear your name before, I'm sorry.
Oh, Adolf Resnickovitz.
Go ahead.
I own property on both sides of the town. I own some on High Street in Asonet and some in East Freetown on County Road. I have an issue with the High Street property. The water from the road runs onto my property and floods out a area that is actually a drainage pipe that goes under the road. It's been there for, since I was a baby, at least I know. And the side that runs into the state forest is plugged up. So am I going to have to regrade my yard so none of that water goes to where it was naturally going before?
No.
Michael.
Yep. Our attorney, Mark Rich, would like to add a little bit to that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Victoria. Just quickly to add to that, these are requirements that are coming through to municipalities throughout the Commonwealth having to do with EPA requirements. They're not going to require you or anyone to do anything with respect to your property right now. It imposes issues with future development and future land use, but doesn't require anything to happen right now. So I think, just as Victoria answered very succinctly, and I'm answering more verbally, the answer's no.
Is there any further discussion on Article 7? See, tell your friends, town meeting's fun. All right, hearing none, all in favor of Article 7?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 7 is adopted unanimously. Excuse me, Article 8, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws, Article 3, powers and duties of town officers. Section 3.5, tax collector denial, suspension, or revocation as follows: A, to delete the current paragraph A and insert in place thereof the following new paragraph A. The tax collector or other municipal official responsible for records of all municipal taxes, assessments, betterments, and other municipal charges hereinafter referred to as the tax collector, shall annually and may periodically furnish to each department, board, commission, or division hereinafter referred to as the licensing authority that issues licenses or permits, including renewals and transfers, a list of any person, corporation, or business enterprise hereinafter referred to as the party that has neglected or refused to pay any local taxes, fees, assessments, betterments, or other municipal charges for a period of not less than 30 days, and that such party has not filed in good faith a pending application for an abatement of such tax or a pending petition before the appellate tax board. B, delete in paragraph E the words "bicycle permit", Chapter 85, Section 11a, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the treasurer tax collector. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article 8 as read. Is there any discussion on Article 8? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 8 is adopted unanimously. Article 9, to see if the town will vote in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41c, to increase the whole estate allowance for applicants for real estate tax exemption under said Clause 41c, from $30,000 to $40,000 for a single person, and from $35,000 to $55,000 for a married couple, to take effect with the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Assessors. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article 9 as read. Is there any discussion on Article 9? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 9 is adopted unanimously. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 17e, which will allow an annual increase to the whole estate limit qualification for exemption from real estate taxes under Clause 17d, to take effect with the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Assessors. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article 10 as read. Is there any discussion on Article 10? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 10 is adopted unanimously. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41d, which will allow an annual increase in both the gross receipts limit and the whole estate limit qualification for exemption from real estate taxes under Clause 41c, to take effect with the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Assessors. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article 11 as read. Is there any discussion on Article 11? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 11 is adopted unanimously. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 17f, which will allow an annual increase to the amount of the exemption from real estate taxes granted under Clause 17d, to take effect with the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Assessors. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article 12 as read. Is there any discussion on Article 12? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 12 is adopted unanimously. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article 26 of the special town meeting held on October 18th, 2021, by designating the Board of Selectmen as the appointing authority for the three resident positions on the Bylaw Review Committee and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the moderator. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article 13 as read. Is there any discussion on Article 13? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 13 is adopted unanimously. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 3 of the general bylaws, powers and duties of town officers, by inserting the following new section at the end thereof, the section numbered to be determined by the town clerk and/or take any action relative thereto. Bylaw Review Committee, there shall be a Bylaw Review Committee consisting of the town clerk or designee, a member of the Board of Selectmen chosen by that board, a member of the Finance Committee chosen by that committee, a member of the planning board or their designee chosen by that board, and one resident from each precinct to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, all for terms of one year running concurrent with the fiscal year. Said committee shall be charged with conducting periodic reviews of the town's bylaws no less than every five years, or more frequently as may be requested by town meeting, and shall make recommendations to town meeting for additions, deletions, or amendments thereto as may from time to time seem advisable to it. This was submitted by the moderator. It requires a majority vote, and the Finance Committee takes no position on this article. Motion has been made and seconded Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article fourteen as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article fourteen is adopted unanimously. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of ten thousand five hundred six dollars to supplement the budget of the Council on Aging for the purpose of adding additional hours for the part-time senior clerk for the Council on Aging, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Council on Aging Director. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article fifteen as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article fifteen is adopted unanimously. Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of eighty thousand dollars to purchase and equip a new utility rescue trailer and associated equipment for the fire department, including any costs incidental and related thereto and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the fire chief. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article sixteen as read. Is there any discussion on Article sixteen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article sixteen is adopted unanimously. Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of three thousand dollars to purchase firefighting foam for the fire department, including any costs incidental and related thereto and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the fire chief. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article seventeen as read. Is there any discussion on Article seventeen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article seventeen is adopted unanimously. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of one hundred thirty thousand dollars to purchase extrication and rescue equipment for the fire department, including any costs incidental and related thereto and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the fire chief. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article eighteen as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article eighteen is adopted unanimously. Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of sixteen thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-eight cents to be added to the Conservation Land Fund established under Mass General Laws, Chapter forty, Section eight C., and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Conservation Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article nineteen as read. Is there any discussion on Article nineteen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article nineteen is adopted unanimously. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from available funds the sum of two hundred fifty thousand dollars to supplement funding in the other post-employment benefit, other post-employment benefits fund, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article twenty as read. Is there any discussion on Article twenty? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from available funds the sum of money as specified herein for the following capital projects, including any costs incidental and related thereto, and/or take any action relative thereto. Pickup truck or SUV for building department, fifty thousand dollars. Pickup truck or SUV for facilities department, fifty thousand dollars. This was submitted by the Building Commissioner. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article twenty-one as read. Is there any discussion on Article twenty-one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty-one is adopted unanimously. Now, that could have been a really great dramatic moment. The door opened right when I asked if somebody had anything to say about it. I won't say who, but somebody walked in and just sat right down. Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of five hundred thousand dollars for roadway improvements, including any costs incidental and related thereto, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Highway Surveyor. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article twenty-two as read. Is there any discussion on Article twenty-two? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty-two is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of seventeen thousand dollars for the purpose of supplementing the town's management information systems budget, Department Number one fifty-one, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Police Chief. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article twenty-three as read. Is there any discussion on Article twenty-three? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty-three is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of ten thousand dollars for codification of the town's general and zoning bylaws by the office of the town clerk and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the town clerk. This requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article twenty-four as read. Is there any discussion on Article twenty-four? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty-four is adopted unanimously. Cheryl is mouthing "thank you" to you right now. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of one thousand ten dollars to pay an unpaid bill of a prior fiscal year to Heath Chase from fiscal year two thousand twenty-one and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Cemetery Commission. It requires a nine-tenths vote. That's a, that's a new one. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article twenty-five as read, which was recommended by the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion on Article twenty-five? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty-five is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of six thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty cents to pay any unpaid bills of a prior fiscal year to Olivera Brothers Materials, two hundred twenty-six dollars, twenty-six cents, as submitted by the Highway Surveyor. Total welding supply, one hundred twenty-three dollars and twenty-four cents, as submitted by the Highway Surveyor. Salem Alzabak, two thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars, as submitted by the Highway Surveyor. ATG Group Incorporated, one hundred fifty-five dollars, as submitted by the Building Commissioner. Guardian Pest Control, two hundred eighty-nine dollars, as submitted by Facilities. Precision Window and Kitchen Incorporated, three thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars, as submitted by Facilities, from fiscal year two thousand twenty-three and/or take any action relative thereto. This also requires a nine-tenths vote, and the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article twenty-six as read. Is there any discussion on Article twenty-six? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty-six is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of fourteen thousand dollars to purchase two roll-off containers for the transfer station and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Transfer Station Supervisor. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article twenty-seven as read. Is there any discussion on Article twenty-seven? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty-seven is adopted unanimously. Article twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of sixteen thousand dollars for the purchase, installation, setup, and maintenance of electronic voting equipment for use at town meeting, including any costs incidental and related thereto and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen and the Town Clerk, by the Town Clerk and the Board of Selectmen. Requires a majority vote, and the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article twenty-eight as read. Is there any discussion on Article twenty-eight? Yes.
Brian Miller, Flag Swamp Road. So, just so I understand, this is, does this mean that we're no longer going to be raising our hands? I, I mean, this is the purest form of government town meeting style, and to have it switched with, into electronic forms, I think is something that's lost. When we do ballots, maybe, that's something that's different, or just private, that's something you want to do, but this is town meeting stuff, we're discussing this in public. We should be showing our hands as to who is voting for what. I don't think that we should be hiding it behind electronic devices. That's just my opinion. And I think they do a great job counting already, and to, to put something in here that there's been miscounts, I don't know about that. I don't know. I just, I would like to know the reason why we find that this to be a better idea. That's all.
Sure.
I'm sorry I didn't come by and ask you earlier, Cheryl, but...
No, that's fine. Absolutely fine. So, there is a handout that we had along with the warrants, and it was on the PowerPoint presentation in the beginning, but basically it's to replace the hand, voice, and paper voting to protect the privacy and anonymity. I can't say that word, sorry.
Anonymity.
Thanks.
There you go.
And it's gonna, you know, a long story short is, personally, I feel some folks do, do not vote how they would normally vote in the presence of other folks. So, it would protect that person. The person has, the voter has the opportunity to change the vote before the, the vote is called.
Hold on, let Cheryl finish first, then jump in.
We wouldn't be the first ones, yeah. We wouldn't be the first town to do this. It's just a quicker, and it will give us a more accurate count, and rather than wasting time when we have to do hand counts, it automatically will pop up on the screen for you. Those are some of the benefits.
Just come on back to, so everybody can hear.
So, I, I get what you're saying, but if we were in a representative town meeting style, or something like that, I could see that being more of a thing, but the town, the town meeting style is the most purest form of a democracy, and to hide behind an electric, I just feel that if you feel that strongly and you don't want to vote on something, maybe you can get up and try to convince people to vote differently, or it's just, or don't gum. I mean, we have enough, it's a representative, I mean, we're a town meeting, each individual person has a right to say something and vote, and I just worry that the electronic thing's gonna muck it up a little bit. I don't know.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just, just to some of those points, a couple of things. There is difference between open town meeting and a representative town meeting. Representative town meetings, you actually can't have, I don't know, secret ballots. So, there's, there's actually a specific requirement that at a representative town meeting, you know how your representatives vote. With, with this process, the intent is, again, as, as the town clerk has mentioned, as Cheryl mentioned just a minute ago, the intent is to have greater accuracy and greater record keeping, so that when we have two-thirds votes, or nine-tenths votes, that we have a very accurate count. This, this is not intended to replace the ability of voters to come to the microphone and speak on a matter. You will still be able to speak, there will still be full debate. All it is, is the ability to record the votes. So, it won't, it won't decrease the democratic process. It's, it's certainly not intended to, to discourage voters from coming to the meeting. In fact, the intent is to encourage voters to come, so that they don't feel that intimidation. To your point that, you know, will, will people be more involved? The expectation is those who want to get up and convince their neighbors and other voters to vote in a particular way, that's still going to happen. It's not going to change that at all. It's simply the mechanics of voting.
I mean, it, it sounds logical. Would it only be used for the, the close ones?
No.
Would it be used for every single?
It would be used for every vote. It avoids having to recount votes. It, it does speed the process up. I mean, tonight, this has been a fantastic meeting.
Until now.
Unanimous votes. Until now. No, no, this is, this is actually, this is perfect.
I'm a, I'm a big fan of our style of, of town meeting here. I mean, we're really one of the only people, the only towns left around that didn't convert to representative town meeting, which is where you lose that. Because in representative town meeting, you can call up your representative person and explain what you want, therefore you can hide behind that cloud of, you know, worrying, you know, of, of what you don't want people to know you're voting for.
If I may, there are actually far, far fewer towns that are representative town meeting.
But there's far fewer that do in full town anymore, either.
No, that's, that's actually not true. I, I, I travel across, across the Commonwealth during every town meeting season. I've done, I don't know, thousands of town meetings, and I can tell you, and I'm, I'm in the middle of the, of the season right now.
Okay.
The vast majority of towns are open town meetings, cities have city councils. A representative town meeting is kind of like a super city council, and it, it, it is an interesting process, it's a very different process, but the vast majority of towns remain open town meetings.
Okay.
And there, and many, many of them are going...
Do you find that they're converting to this style?
Many of them are going to clickers because of the desire for accuracy, and because far more people are questioning votes. Two, a two-thirds vote can hang on a single vote, and it's so important because when Cheryl, when the town clerk has to report to the state the outcome of a bylaw change and record those votes, it's very important. I've actually had votes turn on a single vote. I've seen situations where we've actually had to go back and show, no offense, Michael, but an error by a moderator in counting votes that resulted in a single vote change and convincing the Attorney General to review and approve a bylaw change, even though the moderator had declared that it failed. So, it, it, it does allow for accuracy. I totally agree with you. I'm a huge fan of town meeting, huge fan of open town meeting. It is a very pure system. This, in many ways, encourages that because, again, it avoids the intimidation factor of, of putting your hand up. And I, I know, you know, some people might say, well, I want to see how my neighbors vote, but not everybody wants to do that, and so it does protect that. Think about the democratic process. It doesn't require you to stand up when you, when you vote at, at an election. And here, it will encourage that accuracy, and it will assist the, the town clerk in recording those really close ones, but we can't do it ju... This investment and this process would benefit if we do it for all, and it seems like it would take more time, especially on a night like tonight when we're getting straight unanimous votes. But, believe me, I think we've all been in, in, in these meetings where contentious issues have arisen, and it can get confusing because you have motions and amendments, and, and additional amendments, and a, a whole process. Michael does a great job keeping track of them. Cheryl does a great job taking notes, but this will allow for that precision, so that when the minutes of the meeting have to, have to be produced, and a record has to be provided to the Attorney General, we're not arguing over what actually happened and how many votes there were. So, I think your points are excellent, but I think the main thing to keep in mind is that the voters will still have the chance to get up, speak their minds, convince their fellows, and, and proceed, just as we are. It's simply the mechanics of voting.
That's a great answer. That's basically exactly what I was looking for. So, as long as everything's protected, that sounds great.
It's even more protected.
Thank you, guys, and I don't want Cheryl's job to be harder, so...
No. I'll, you know, I'll add just two things to that, because Cheryl and I have talked about this a little bit over the last couple of months. If we have a, a meeting that's got, you know, five articles, and they all seem like absolutely no-brainer articles, we won't use this for this. We'll do voices, it will take the same ten minutes that it usually takes. And something a little bit less technical, there's not a single person up here, or I think out there, that does not appreciate the job that Paul and Myrna do, and this is not a reflection on them at all. So, I don't want anybody to, yes, please clap, because they do a wonderful job counting, and this is not at all directed toward them, I, I think I can say confidently. Go ahead, please.
Melissa Deroche, East Free Town. I, I'm curious about the, the length of time, or if there's any support in terms of, like, something happens. We got clickers in higher ed, I work in higher ed, we use them, they were huge about ten years ago, and now they're obsolete. So, I'm just wondering how long, you know, this software and upgrade and that whole situation, how, we buy this once, and we expect it to last, like, how long before it needs to be replaced or changed?
Okay, so, depend, there's various companies out there, depending on the company that we choose to go with, the warranty is one to three years, but the estimated lifespan is guaranteed at twenty.
So, it's warranty for one to three, but they expect that the last for twenty?
Yep.
Is that right? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any? Yes. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. My name is Joel Anthony Costa, ninety-four, Brealey Road. Yes. This matter can always be brought up at, excuse me, sorry. This matter can always be brought up at another time, but I suggest that more information be giving, be given to the town, so that, that, that the town can make a better decision. This type of voting would be taking the human element out of, out of voting at a town meeting. Free Town's been around since sixteen eighty-three. We're still here after over three hundred years, the same system, and I, I think we'll do all right without the electronic, but however, this matter could always be brought up at another time, and I have one question. Will there be, after the, if, if this is adopted, I urge my fellow town, townies to a no vote on this matter, on this article. However, does this system, can it generate, after the fact, can it generate a paper product?
So, like a record of, of how votes were done, or a record of who voted?
A, a, a record, hmm, of, an official, I understand the tally, I understand the tally will be on a screen, but can, is, is one able to go to Town Hall and obtain a paper record of the electronic clicker, the electronic voting, sir?
I don't actually know the answer to that, so...
So, there is a report that runs?
Yes.
The clickers are not associated with any particular voter, but the official minutes?
No, not the minutes, not, not the minutes, Ms. Estrella, excuse me. The, if, if we use an electronic voting apparatus, that means that all the voting will be on software, right? It won't be by hand or by voice vote?
If, if I may, Mr. Moderator?
Sure.
I think, I think it's important to remember that even if you have a hand count, ultimately, the moderator declares the hand count, there's no, the record is, the, the record, the record that's in the minutes of the meeting.
Yes, sir.
And this will be essentially the same thing, so there is, there's no necessity, and there is, there will not be essentially an electronic record, because the moderator makes a declaration. Once that declaration is made, that's the count, that's the official record, and that's kept by the town clerk. So, and, and it goes into the minutes, and it can be questioned. If, if, if the moderator states the, the vote, and seven voters rise to challenge, there's a mechanism for challenging that, that, that result. The only difference is you're not going to see hands go up, instead people will be pushing their clickers. So, in fact, as, as Michael indicated, as, as the, the moderator indicated, you will, you will, you will not be using the system for routine type of votes, but for the more complicated votes, where there is a concern, and it would be ideal for this, this matter right now, since we obviously have some disagreement. This doesn't sound like it's, this is probably going to be a unanimous vote, but you'd have an accurate count of that, but the way town meeting works, regardless of whether you use an electronic system or not, it's predicated on the moderator making a call of the, the vote, and if not challenged, that vote goes into the, the minutes. And ordinarily, you wouldn't have numbers. We, again, we got unanimous votes here, but let's say we had five people who voted against. You would just have those in favor, those against, and it would just record a majority vote, or a two-thirds within the authority of the moderator, not necessarily a number. Now, we will be generating a number, but there is no legal requirement, because you can't go after the fact and challenge it. It's, it's not, the, the process is not to say the moderator, the, the number was wrong. You need to challenge at the time of town meeting, seven voters rise and challenge the moderator. Once the meeting is over, the moderator has made a declaration, and that's it. There is no legal requirement to maintain that tally, because the tally will be in the minutes and will be as declared by the moderator.
Yes, sir, and I, and I thank you for that explanation. However, the moderator can hear the yays and nays very clear, just as, as we have done this evening. But electronically, the moderator, from what I understand, excuse me, sir, the, the town moderator cannot hear the, the clicks, yay or nay, the electronic voting, yay or nay. So, my question is, will, at, at the request of a citizen of the town of Free Town, going to the clerk's office, can a citizen request a paper count, an official paper count, that backs up what the software has counted, and also will that paper count be official?
The official record of the meeting will be in the minutes.
No, not the official record of the meeting. I'm sorry, sir.
That is, that is the...
Hear a question? Call a question.
Just, if I, if, if I could just briefly, again, reiterate, the official count will be announced by the moderator and recorded in the minutes. You could then go to Town Hall at any time and request that official count, but there's no opportunity to then challenge that. The opportunity is here at town meeting. You will have, you will have the official vote count taken. The moderator doesn't have to hear the clicks, because the moderator will receive the numbers.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, we have...
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. I, I don't want to cut you off, but we have a motion to call the question, so I have to take that right away.
A no vote. I urge a no vote.
So, we have right now a motion to call the question. This is not a debatable motion. What we are voting on basically is, are we going to continue talking about this or not? So, if you are in favor of ending this discussion and just voting on the matter, please say aye now.
Aye.
If you wish to continue discussing this, please say nay.
Nay.
Okay, the majority has voted in favor of calling the question, so we are now...
Two-thirds.